So I'm gonna call a meeting to order, regular planning commission meeting, November 14th. And I'm gonna ask Carol to take the roll call.
Mr. Rock?
Present.
Mr. Gillis?
Present.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Mr. Cooper?
Present.
Mr. Murray?
Present.
Mr. President?
President.
So the next item is to approve the agenda to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience at the order of the presentation. Is there any member of the planning commission that wants to modify the agenda? Okay, we'll leave it as is. Next item is presentations and informational reports. Anything on that, Holly? No? Okay, so we'll pass on to the next. Next item on the agenda is public comment. There's quite a number, quite a number of the members of the public here. I'm gonna try and exercise what little authority I have to ask if members of the public are here to discuss this item on the agenda, which is the Joseph Crown development. Just by show of hands, how many people are here to discuss the Joseph Crown development? All right, so what I'd like to do to cause less confusion in my mind is to ask you to hold off, this is the public comment section, you're allowed to come up and speak, but I'm gonna ask you to hold off until this item comes up on the agenda. It would make more sense for you to come up and, and talk about it at that time. And that anybody else in the audience who wants to discuss an item not related to the item on the agenda, this would be the time for you to come forward and speak if you wish, as part of the public comment. Okay, so it looks like everybody's here mainly to discuss the item on the agenda. All right, so we're onto the regular calendar. First item on the agenda was to approve the minutes from the May 9th meeting. Anybody, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 9th meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes, the minutes of the meeting, our last meeting.
We have a motion, we have a second to approve the minutes. I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll move on to item two, which is the consideration of the allocations for the Joseph Crown construction. And this is the time when you folks can come forward. So I'm gonna ask our attorney for a little advice. So it's my understanding that I'll get Holly to come up and give us a staff report, and then after that, should, should there be a, a commission discussion or members of the public?
We have a commission discussion.
Commission discussion after that, then the members of the public can come up?
Right.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass this on to Holly for a discussion of item two, which is the allocation award, and part of this item is also SEQA, and it appears, part of it is also the awarding of the housing units. Is that correct, Holly?
Yes.
All right, so it's your, I'm throwing the ball over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Cooper, and good evening, planning commissioners and members of the audience and, and the public at large, too. Tonight, we consider the awarding of a housing unit allocations for proposed 44-unit project south of CAM. It's the project that's bisected also by Sixth Avenue alignment on a currently vacant parcel. The project was an approved map with all entitlements previously granted, but the map expired and the previous approvals were rescinded. They, they are back tonight with a new financial partner and here for consideration for allocations as a part of our growth management ordinance. The allocation process does come from that ordinance. It was passed by a referendum of the citizens of, of Kingsburg back in 2004. A number of you planning commissioners have been through this and it's often an annual event, depending on applications. It is a unique to Central Valley Cities. It's meant to be a competitive process, so there's a self-ranking and review that the applicant does, and then that is reviewed internally by staff. It is an annual process, it's calendar-specific according to the ordinance. So this is the first meeting in November, and that is when Planning Commission reviews an allocation application, and then it goes on to City Council in December. It's a first step in a project being reviewed for approval. Some come to us having had site plan review, some are still a little more conceptual, and that is the case for this, although there was a site plan and an approved map previously, and what has been submitted with this project is, is fairly similar to that. And there may involve some further changes because it is a conceptual site plan. The requests for housing units are granted to consider that initial request. Units could go down after those units are awarded, but they cannot go up. So this is a 44-unit request, they can't come back later and ask for 48, for instance. They, they could come back with 42, and that would, that would qualify. The rank, the rank, ranking and rating is included as attachment C in your staff report. There's a, a narrative that's submitted by the applicant, and then there's some responses from staff. The conceptual models and elevations of the housing product itself are included in this, this submittal. Some of those will probably remain. There is an alley-loaded model in keeping with some of our more recent encouragements with all-new development, so we do appreciate seeing that as part of the submittal. And again, the site plan, Exhibit 3, that's nearly identical to the previously submitted project. There's the exhibit with the site plan. Although we have pending projects that are in, sort of in the pipeline and in discussions, this was the only application submitted during this allocation period for 2025. The SEQA determination is that the awarding of allocations is considered an organizational or administrative action, it's not considered a project by SEQA. And when a SEQA is determined to be a project, that's when it needs further analysis and environmental review. So any, any project that is proposed, that goes forward, will have a, a subsequent SEQA analysis performed. I believe the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have about the project. And with that, the recommendation is to review the rating and ranking for the housing unit allocations, and that you pass resolutions 2024-04 recommending to the Kingsburg City Council approval of the allocation of 44 single-family residential units for the proposed development identified above for 2025 calendar year. Sorry, my phone's ringing. Here's a lesson for you. Pursuant to Kingsburg's growth allocation program. That concludes my staff report. Sorry for the interruption, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. So at this time, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for any questions or discussion from Holly, or any discussion amongst ourselves. And I think that discussion could include anything connected with SEQA or the granting of the 44 units, because all those three things are coming under this item. So any questions or comments from the Planning Commission, or questions for Holly? All right.
It's my understanding that this is the only application we have received for 2025, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, I mean, there is, there is an addendum to that, and that is that if the council takes action later on in the year, in the early spring, to open up allocation, the allocation process again, that is completely at their discretion. They may do that for 2025, but that's not, you know, that's not being considered tonight for this action.
This appears to be a fairly non-controversial project. It's just a, a carryover from a previous map, which is the way I see it, almost identical to, to the map we have now for this project. So if there's, this would be a good time to throw it open to the members of the public. If there's any members of the public that want to come forward and have questions about this, this would be a good time to do that. Or if the, the owners or developers want to come forward and offer us more information, this would be a good time to do that as well. Please come up and give us your name so we know who you are.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Joseph Crowe. Good, good evening, Commissioners and members of the audience. This will be my first project here in Kingsburg for myself. I was involved in building the Marion Villas apartment complex for Queering years ago. I came across this land from the previous owner. We were almost to the very end. Matter of fact, we had a bond in place to do the project, or I did, and a national company who built next door came to me and said, "We want to buy this from you." They waited until the last minute before the allocation process and then backed out. So that's why I wasn't here last year, and the project sat. We had, I spent over $100,000 cleaning up the dump that it became, and I know it was an ISO. We went out and put the fence, and then some drunk drivers ran through it. So I've been through the mill on this project, and I've already invested about 3.2 million into it. So, yeah, the engineering was done, and now I'm having to restart that and re-go through this process again. It's gonna be a few hundred thousand more to invest, which I'm willing to do, build a beautiful community. The models will mirror the custom homes I built in Clovis. I've got a few custom subdivisions, so they'll have all the fancy embellishments of raw siding, three-colored exteriors, a lot of fancy embellishments. So I'm open to any questions that anybody has.
I have one question. They, I went through the, the elevations of house design, and there's one, one elevation that's actually alley-loaded. I guess they're planning on putting the garage in the alley.
Correct.
You ever come across that before in your develop-
Bay area, in the Bay area.
Bay area, yeah, it's big in there. San Luis Obispo does it a lot. We would like to do it, you know, I'm sure you know why, the advantages and disadvantages. And it's an advantage in Kingsburg, because we have the alleys, so we like to use them for something other than garbage collection, so if they can get, you know, some garages in the alley. And the custom homes, if you go up to northeast, northeast Kingsburg, there's a number of custom homes where the homeowners themselves decided to do alley-loaded, and it made the elevation of the street look gorgeous.
It looked good.
It really looks nice when you, when you eliminate that concrete driveway and, and all the accoutrements that go in the driveway. It really, really looks nice. So I appreciate you doing that.
Correct.
I'm glad you're doing it, even it's only, you know, maybe one or two units. It's a good start, and the staff can use that as an example for other developers and say, "Hey, look at Thomas Crab did this over here, it looks pretty good, you should go have a look at it."
We're gonna try to hit the 20% mark with that.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that really improves, to me, that really improves the aesthetics of the street.
I couldn't agree more. Out in Dallas, I've made several trips, most, all of their communities are all alley-loaded. All you see is the front of these beautiful big homes.
Yeah.
And nothing, no trash cans.
Exactly.
No tore-up cars. It's, it brings a lot of alley into the community. Dallas, Texas.
Dallas, Texas is doing it, huh? Yeah, so more people are getting on the, getting on the bandwagon, and it, it really helps the city. And it's perfect for Kingsburg, because we already have the alleys.
I couldn't agree more.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for coming up and, and educating us. All right, okay then. There's three things we have to do. We have to get a motion for the awarding of the allocations. So I'm gonna bring it back to the Planning Commission and entertain a motion to award the allocations to the Joseph Crown project that is in consideration tonight. There's one other thing we have to do here. Let me get ahead of myself.
Would it be proper to, excuse me, Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Would it be proper to take the SEQA separately? Or can we move them all at one?
No, we usually do them separately. So you do the SEQA first, the recommendation, and the recommendation for the award of the allocations.
Okay.
And then the, and the, yeah, the set forth on each two.
Okay, Mr. Nolan, just to straighten this out in my mind, we have to award the allocations, we have to approve SEQA, and then we have to award the housing units. And the housing units would be awarded under a resolution. So there is no, I don't see a resolution for the allo, the awarding allocations, but I see a resolution to award the, the 44 single-family residential units. And I see the SE, the SEQA requirement as well. Or have I got that confused?
I so moved that we approve the SEQA recommendation, and find that this meets the requirements for SEQA.
Okay, we have a, a motion to approve the SEQA requirements. Is there a second for SEQA? We have a motion and a second to approve SEQA. Any discussion or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the determination that the award of housing units is not a, is not a project under SEQA? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So that motion is carried. So the second motion would be to award the allocations, correct?
And approve resolution 2024-04.
Both at the same time? Okay.
That's all part of the resolution.
Okay, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve, a motion to pass resolution 2024-04 recommending to City Council the approval of the allocation of 44 residential units to, and this motion to include the awarding of the allocations for those same 44 units. Okay.
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or amendments? Hearing none, then all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. That motion carries to pass resolution 2024-04, as well as to award the allocations. All right. So we're on to item three. And Mr. Chairman, we, there is, there was a typographical error in a portion of the amendments to the Title 17 of the municipal code that we found in going through it, and we need to copy a page out of the prior revisions to the Title 17 so that the commission has some additional information in front of it when it considers that agenda item. So we'd like to take a little five-minute break so that we can get those copies made and, and hand it out to the commission, and also making it available to the community. So done. So we're gonna take a five-minute break so that this can be done, and the washrooms, if you need them, are just down the hall over here. Or you could step outside, and we'll come back in five minutes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the, the page that you received just a few minutes ago, that's page 194 of the revisions to Title 17 of the municipal code, and it's up there on the screen. And the, your packet identifies under 17, under the revisions to Section 17.48.040, the housing element implementation, subparagraph C identifies only two of the development requirements that apply to the properties located in the HEI zone. The page that you received just now identifies four development requirements, not just two. And so when we, when the commission considers the recommendation for the approval of these amendments to Title 17 of the municipal code, we will be including in that recommendation to the City Council the, all four of the development requirements identified in Section 17.48.050, not just the two conditions that are identified on page 194 of your, of the staff report.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
So when we take up item three, I'm assuming that it is going to include the approval of the amendments to Title 17 that are in the package attached to the agenda for tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. All right, let's go back to item number three, consideration of zoning text amendments and housing element implementation overlay. And I'm gonna pass it on to Holly for more discussion.
Thank you, and thank you for accommodating us while we made that important change. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. We are at the sub-third item on the agenda. It's the consideration of the zoning amendments and creation of the housing element implementation overlay district in specific parcels, on specific parcels for compliance with the 2023, 2031 housing element. Kingsburg was part of the multi-jurisdictional housing element process. It was initiated in 2023, was coordinated regionally by Fresno Council of Governments. The housing element is a state-mandated eight-year policy document. It, it's a component of the Kingsburg general plan, which is undergoing an update currently. The overall purpose of the housing element is to identify current and projected housing needs, show locations where housing can be built, and set goals, policies, and programs to meet the community's housing needs. Every city's required housing element has policies and programs that must be implemented in order for the housing element to continue to be, to be considered compliant with state requirements. For Kingsburg, the 2023, 2031 housing element was reviewed by Planning Commission on May 9th of, of this year, and then by council on July 17th, where it was adopted. After adoption, the notice of adoption was sent up to the State Housing and Community Development Department, and they had time to review and consider that. They sent us a letter stating, stating that the Kingsburg submitted housing element was in substantial compliance, and that was sent to us on September 16th as attachment two. Part of the requirements for certification of the housing element are to take action steps to ensure that the housing element remains in compliance in accordance with their programs. Most cities are required to include updates and changes to their zoning ordinance to reflect current state law. In addition, some cities are required to increase the development potential for identified properties in order to accommodate their share of what we call the RENA, which is a regional housing needs assessment targets. As a result of this year, and this review and two-year effort, the requirements for the policies, programs, and the overlay are outlined and presented to you. the policies, programs, and the overlay are outlined and presented to you tonight. There's a number of required changes. Some are small to the zoning ordinance, some are just cleanup, some are adding definitions. And in your packet, you had a redlined version that included additions and deletions to reflect many of these state goals. Couple of things were added. There were some procedures that have been added or updated to Title 17, and each of the procedures are required for compliance with state regulations. We added a density bonus section, which previously, I think most cities would just defer to state law when a, an application came in that was requesting a density bonus. But to be a little more transparent, I think that the state is requiring everybody to actually put that in their zoning ordinance, so more words added. The, we also have a, an accessory dwelling unit procedure that's in there, and that is basically our accessory dwelling ordinance, which was also needed. We were deferring to the state for that since there've been so many legislative changes over the years, that every year they added something a little different to that, to that entitlement, but we, you know, we decided it would be better just to have that in our, in our zoning ordinance. There was a need for some definitions to be added, and some of those were just updates, and some of those were added for clarity, so people knew just what, what we were talking about when you looked at a particular type of housing. And then there was a section for allowed uses, so to make it more clear where some of these types of housing could be put theoretically in the, in the city and be in compliance. We also added some development standards, or some modifications to some development standards to be consistent with state law. There was one about off-street parking for multifamily projects, and the other one was more of a cleanup action, where we had a minimum site area. We amended our RM 2.0 table to be consistent, and now it is a 2,000-square-foot minimum, which really was, was more or less a change that was needed to put that into compliance. Part of the requirement for Kingsburg and other cities was to identify certain parcels that would be designated with a greater density to address a shortfall of units for the housing element requirement. This is an action that has been required in many Central Valley cities. These parcels are part of the parcels identified in the housing element sites inventory. So of the, of this change in the base density of the parcels, the housing element implementation overlay has four parcels that are all identified as RM3, and they are designated for higher density in the general plan. Designation of an overlay with 20 dwelling units to an acre is a map change. And there's no projects that are proposed at this time for any of these parcels. And in essence, what is actually built is strictly a function of the free market. There's not a requirement to construct units, and Kingsburg will not be penalized for not building housing on these sites. Builders will have to comply with Kingsburg's objective standards when we adopt those standards when submitting a project. Neither Kingsburg nor most cities in that, are in the housing building business, nor does the housing element require that. A project, like all projects, will only happen if it makes financial sense for investors to support it. One of the functions of a housing element is to identify any potential obstacles to housing construction and to remove those obstacles where it's possible, showing that it is possible to meet this housing need is all that's required of us. For us to be found in compliance with the state, we must complete all these changes, included in the staff report by December 31st of this year. Failure would result in revocation of our compliance status by the state, and this would cost us opportunity for funding and potentially hurt our chances to apply for grants. Finally, we would have to spend money on staff and resources to change our housing element at this point. The housing element will be good for the next eight years or until the next cycle. The housing element has shown, however, that there are many qualities that the city has. We have good schools, and that was identified, decent housing stock, because they do an inventory of housing stock to see if some is substandard, or, you know, if it's considered habitable or in jeopardy, and we looked good in that regard. And we have a commitment to a variety of housing types with an emphasis on connectivity and neighborhood amenities. You have in your staff report a summary of the required changes, and the zoning ordinance has been attached with a version that reflects the additions and updates. And any projects would have to meet objective standards, and then they would be subjected, they would be, that, those objective standards would have a public hearing notice, too. So with this, there is a recommendation in your staff report, which is, you recommend the secret determination for the amendment to Title 17 of the municipal code and the housing element implementation overlay, and recommend to city council the proposed amendments to Title 17 of the municipal code, and the application of the housing element implementation overlay district to the four specific parcels as presented in the, in the accordance with the requirements of the state housing and community development department for purposes of meeting the requirements of the Kingsburg housing element and adopt resolution 24, 202404 making such recommendations. That concludes my staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
We'll bring it back to the commission for any comments or questions.
Holly, basically, we have seen most of these changes over a period of time, over the last couple of years, as the state has come up with them. This basically, all we're doing is consolidating all those changes and putting them into a single updated section of our housing element. Is that correct, would that be a correct assumption?
I think that's a very good way of summarizing the many changes that have happened over the last couple of years. I think we've seen the legislature being increasingly involved in housing issues, and often they are not recommendations, they're mandates. And so what we are, what we are doing is, is, you know, making sure that we comply with everything that we can at this point in time. This is a living document, and there will be changes over time. At some point, you know, the, the process resets, and it's an eight-year process, so this is the beginning of our, our next eight-year cycle. I will be required to do progress reports every year to show that we've been, you know, making progress towards some of these goals. They're fairly outlined, and, you know, we always do the best we can. We're, we're honest and say, you know, if there's been no housing of a certain category, then that's the answer. But we are, you know, this is indeed the culmination of a number of mandates.
And as, as we have discussed in previous meetings, the city does not go ahead and mandate any construction of any type. We simply go ahead and say, these zones are the types of housing that can go, or, or in the commercial districts, that these types of projects should be here, or there, or wherever. But the city is not in the business of going ahead and building housing, period. It's a market-driven economy.
Yes, that is true.
Any member of the public want to come forward and ask questions or discuss things that were mentioned by Holly?
I got a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Holly, how are these parcels determined on the location for the amendments?
We do have consultants here tonight that will be available to answer questions, too. They're in the audience, but they aren't, they're the general plan consultants, but the housing element is part of the general plan. So the, the parcels were selected by the, by the housing element consultant.
Yes, sir.
If the, there we go, that's on, I can hear myself. Just wanna make sure, green light means it's on. Members, members, what's it, what? John Johnston.
Okay.
Members of council, I appreciate you guys and everything that you do. This is my first time speaking in front of you guys, so this one directly affects me, the APN that's on 24th there by Lenai. And so with, with this document, that says that that piece of property is specifically going to have to be built that way, correct? With the 20 minimum housing, meaning 54 apartments? Am I reading that correct?
The, the density will be 20 units an acre minimum, yes.
Yeah, and an already busy intersection, I mean, I mean, we all, none of us want to have an apartment complex right across the street from us. Let's just, let's just call it up like we see it, but.
As, as I stated, and I'm trying to go ahead and again state that we zone these things, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what gets built there.
But the way that I read this says must be built there. 20 units, a minimum, or, it's really weird, but it says must be, we find, or it says right here.
As all.
So item number two down there on C, it says sites within the HEI overlay district must be developed at a minimum density of 20 dwelling units per acre. So if you vote on this, that APN is handcuffed, basically. Yes?
At this, at this point in time, if a developer comes in and says, I don't want to do that, I want to do something else, what happens is the city tries to go ahead and make properties in other areas that would go ahead and meet that. What we're trying to do is we have to have 409, is that the number? 409 units for, of this, of this matrix that the state gives us, based upon our city limits at this point in time. If another project comes in and goes ahead and says, I want to build, and they're not in the city limits at this point in time, and they say, I want to build an apartment complex on this piece of property that'll be annexed into the city, that could be used to offset those 409 units.
So basically, they would have to come and put that on an agenda, and then you guys would have to vote on, can they do that? And if, if you've already floated that out to the state that these are earmarked for these locations, and you don't have another location, it's gonna be a no. Because there's gonna be grant funding and everything tied, I mean, this is gonna be a domino effect.
Well, the state, I don't want to say that the state doesn't always get what they want, but we also have to go ahead and realize economically, if it isn't an economic program that works for a developer, he's not gonna build it.
Correct.
And, and so what happens is that we can have goals of having these many units, doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna go ahead and get that happen. We have, for instance, Marion Villas and, what's the other new?
Lanay.
Lanay. Those units were built to go ahead and meet those maximum density, those higher-density areas, and they helped offset our prior requirements for meeting the number of units of that category. So what I'm saying basically is that that's the way it is with our city limits at this point in time, but it's all subject to change, just like Marion Villas went ahead and helped us hit our numbers, Lanay helped us hit our numbers. So it's, it's kind of a, I want to say that, a moving target.
Yeah, I, I, I get that. I don't, I don't like it, but I get it. So what was the minimum allowable units on those two developments that we're changing it now to super densified?
I can't remember.
Anybody know?
I don't know, but I could certainly, if you, you know, if you want to take my card, you know, I can research that and let you know what, you know.
So we're changing it to 20, but we don't know what it was?
I.
I'll take the card.
Was it M, was it M, M3?
Yes.
Okay, it was, it was 3,000, this is, this makes 20 units, it's 2,178 square feet per dwelling unit. Previously, it was an M3, which RM3 means 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So basically, what's, we're cutting it from a 3,000 minimum to a 2,171 square foot minimum. So it's slightly higher density.
So you're saying the apartment itself has to be 2,000 square feet?
No.
What are you saying, it's 2,000?
A living unit. What they, when they do zones, like an R7, means you have minimum 7,000 square feet of land per dwelling unit. On an RM5.5, it's 5,000, 500 square feet per dwelling unit. In RM3, it's 3,000 square feet of land per dwelling unit. This is moving it down to 2,178 square feet per dwelling unit.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it was already zoned for apartments. It's now zoned for slightly.
More apartments.
More apartments.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I don't like it. I mean, it's, I get it, we're earmarking it because it's a piece of land that is future, that could fit the needs that, that the city has. I'm sure there's people that want to speak behind me, so that's just my piece. I like to keep Kingsburg small, and I get it, we're under the constraints of the state and trying to go after grant funding, but to me, at what cost? I mean, I'm not, I wasn't born here, but I've been here for 24 years. When we moved here, there was literally a handful of houses for rent, and so I've seen it grow and boom, and I'm just, I'm not sure that it's growing in the way that I saw it when I moved here 24 years ago. I've seen things change in the people, I'm seeing things change in the schools, I'm seeing, you know, my kids have gone through the schools, I got a kid in rate for, he's getting ready to go to high school next year. So I've seen things change. So to me, I mean, if we sacrifice some things to get other things, you know, it kind of, we gotta look at, at what cost? So that's my piece. I would vote no on this if I was in your shoes, so I don't, I don't know what to do. I just gotta close it out, stop talking, somebody else is gonna be behind me. So thank you, I appreciate your time.
It's my, my understanding that this, we're just saying this would be land that we could use for this, but that doesn't, so it doesn't mean that it's going to be used for that.
This is a, you know, again, this is a designation, and it only becomes a project when somebody comes in with, with the submittal of an application and financing, and this is allowing them to build to a certain density for these four parcels as part of our housing element overlay, yes. But there is no, there's no project at this point on any of these parcels.
So we, we have to have so much dens, density, have to have so many houses per dens, but, so what we're telling the state is, okay, we can do that, but that doesn't mean we're necessarily gonna do it right there.
Well, what that means is it is, it is zoned for that now.
Right.
You can do that there, but well, whether it happens or not is completely up to the market.
Right.
This is, this is a, you know, this, at this point, this is, this is a mapping exercise, and I know that, you know, that, that has consequences, but only if, if somebody comes in with an application and with a funding and with a desire. and with a desire to, uh, to go ahead and, and build that type of housing. And we certainly have the need for, uh, some multifamily housing, and, uh, the densities that are proposed are, are, um, are an increase, but not as much of a significant increase as, as one would think, so.
Plus, I know the city is changing, I've been here for 40 years, but a lot of it is regulated by the state. We have to do it. We can't say no when the state tells us to do something, because then we lose a lot of things that we get otherwise, get grants or other monies. Is that right?
That's, yes, indeed, that's correct.
Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, Sherman Dix, Kingsburg. Uh, I just wanted to ask a couple, since we got this late, this modification to the staff report. Number four, that really means, because not familiar with 65583.2 unless you look it up, that's really saying by right, right? No conditions. So the, that, that will make sure that, uh, they have by right, the ability to do it, no conditional use, no plan you, no requirements, right?
Well, there will be, there would be objective standards, that would be...
But that's going to be through staff, right? That's not...
That would be, that would be through staff, but it would also be adopted by the city.
Sure, but does it have to come back to this body for approval, right?
Uh, not, I mean, not, not if it's housing of a certain density, no.
Sure. So, be by right, and then, uh, the...
Sherman, whatever, any projects under this, under 1748050 have to comply with whatever the development requirements are with the city.
Sure.
These are specific requirements, development requirements, as to those parcels that are in that code, that are in that section. But I mean, you know, depending upon what they build there, that would be subject to whatever our development standards are and specifications for any project of, of the same character.
Thanks for that clarification, Mike. So, basically, you're giving them the right to build... So the other, my other question is, the Program 16 talks about 30 units maximum. I see that struck from here, and I think on the staff report, it actually said 25. So which, what's the number? Is there 30, can they build 30 units, up to 30 units?
The staff, the revisions in the staff report for that section are the density of 20 units, 20 units.
Minimum 20 units, but then in the Program 16, in the housing element approved by HCD, it says 30, up to 30.
Up to 30.
So is that still the case? Or is it...
If that's what the housing element...
Why did it get struck out right here?
Well, I think that's just the dense, I mean, often a density could be, you know, less than 30. I think that was just a, that was a ceiling, but...
Okay. So it could, that means by right, they could do up to 30 units, dwelling units per acre?
If it's set forth, if it's set forth in the housing element, yeah, we, but staff made the determination that it's not going to require 30. The only, they could do that, but the only requirement is that it has to be at least a density of 20.
But they'll have the right to do it. The 20 is what you, I mean, and the 20 gets you to be able to count these. If it's a minimum density of 20, you can count this as a low income unit. But you can also count a, a low income unit as anything that just allows up to 20 units per acre, which RM2 does, which I would think would be, I guess I'll start from the beginning, I'm concerned about the, the process, you know, and, and the lots that were picked here, uh, in particular. Uh, I think there was initially a set provided by the consultant that had a lot of flaws to it, and it had to be redone, I don't know if that was like a short timeframe, some of those were, you know, some of them were alleys or parking lots or things that couldn't be used. So I think we maybe ran to these parcels a little too quickly. Uh, I found that, you know, I kind of went through vacant sites out there, I think there's alternatives to the sites that we have picked here that we could still reach those numbers without having to create a whole new zoning district that creates this, uh, super high density, um, you know, within our, our zoning code. And it, a minimum density, so I think, you know, I'm surprised he didn't confirm what he was saying, because it is a minimum. They won't be able to build anything less than 20 units per acre, that's correct, right? So that's the minimum, so it's not going to be a small project, even if somebody wanted to do that. It would have to be to that density. You know, this parcel across from Rayford Johnson, we're looking at 100 unit on, on four acres, pretty dense. So I don't know, to me, there was some, you know, I found lots that would meet it even under, in the, uh, housing element, you know, you have to be, what's the realistic capacity of those sites? But even with that, applying those same percentages, you know, I had, I showed more than 139 units over with other sites without having to do, you know, create this, this zoning. Now, some may require going to RM2, but RM2, you know, to kind of what Bruce was explaining, they might not come in and do 2,000, you know, that may not make sense for them or not be what they want, or, you know, they get public input and they don't want that. In this zoning amendment, they have to do it at that density. And they could go even higher, you know, 30 units, I mean, is pretty dense. We're talking definitely three-story apartments at that, at that point. So I think the RM2 would be better. I, I know, I, I completely understand the time constraint, but I reached out to HCD. They said, you know, you can amend this, a lot of things change over time. So, another thing that changes, we annexed 13 acres, right? In the highway commercial? Is that correct? 13 acres, is that annexation complete the 13 acres?
Are you speaking of the, of the, of the one that's near the Business Park?
Yeah. Is that annexed now? So I mean, that's in the city limits now, that's highway commercial, we're using highway commercial to meet a lot of those, uh, you know, low, low-income housing requirements. So that's another 10 acres over there that could potentially be utilized. So, I think, when I reached out to HCD, they said, hey, you can amend it, and maybe the longest it would take is 90 days. I guess what we could do tonight is a permanent, that's a permanent change, because when you create zoning like this, my understanding, I'll defer here, is you can't downzone anymore. So if you wanted to change it to something less, you know, go back, you know, right? Something else pops up, it's, it's a permanent change. So I would say, instead of doing that, we have an RM2, maybe these sites would be usable, and what's the, what's the, what's the real danger there is maybe 30 days, right? I mean, at least worth a conversation with the state to say, what's the process? You know, you could come back in two weeks and still be, uh, 1231, 2024, but maybe there's an alternative that is, uh, you know, a better allocation. You already heard from one homeowner tonight, you know, they're not so, uh, excited about this type of zoning. You know, I'm one as well, I think already in that area, we have a lot of density and clustering, prod- and projects like this. Even potentially, they say, well, I mean, I think, what I've heard is, oh, nobody's going to come build it. Well, I think that's a big gamble potentially, you know, and definitely the more units you allow somebody to put on a piece of property, the, the better the, the metrics, the economics are, so. And if you think that nobody's going to build it, well then, I mean, if, I, I'm wondering if these property owners know that now the only thing I can do is 20 units of residential on my property. I mean, if they think that you're not going to build something because of that, you know, you may have a claim of, you know, you're taking away, you know, some of my previous rights. So I don't know, uh, you know, necessarily that this would be the best, uh, option. I, I think that that's probably where some of it happened was, you know, we rushed to get the sites because the original sites were incorrect from the consultant, and we missed some, you know, easy downtown that are central business district that could be, you know, meet the, uh, the requirements. And I, I read a lot, did a lot of reading, you know, this document is not an easy read, but, uh, you know, the ones I've identified, and I'll give them to you, they meet the, all of the requirements for low, low income, uh, you know, to be identified as that.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
What you're basically saying is we need to kick this back to our consultants, have them look at alternative sites, and then go ahead and bring this back to planning commission for consideration. Is that correct?
That's what I think, yeah. That would be what I, I would say. I'd say it's at least worth a couple of weeks, you know, I get it, the, the, the deadline and, and some of the ramifications of that, but, you know, we're talking, you know, maybe the state, when you say, hey, we have this, because things change. When I talk to them, it seemed like, you know, it's something that, that happens, and it's not a, a huge process, but, you know, staff can find that out for themselves.
You mentioned, you talked to them, and they said they could amend it. What, what specifically was that referring to?
The vacant sites. So your vacant sites inventory, I'm suggesting pulling these, because you've said in there, we will create this, this new zone, and this is what it's going to do, and it's going to up the density, and it's going to meet those numbers. What I'm saying is we don't, you know, based on what I've seen, we don't need to do that. We have other sites that could be submitted, and so we'd be, it's been approved at this point, you'd just be saying, hey, I want to submit this as an amendment, I talked to Fidel Herrera at HCD. He said, yeah, you know, if you had it ready to go, you'd send it to us, it would be just like the, the previous process. You know, you send a draft, we give you comments, and, you know, he gave me a timeline of 90 days.
So the amendments referred to the location of the properties?
Exactly, which properties we're identifying to meet our requirement under the RENA.
Do the, do we have consulting representatives here?
Yes, we do.
Could we, this, could we talk to them? Have them comment on this?
This is Sarah Allenders, uh, she, uh, is with Purple and Pritchard, she's, uh, part of our general plan update, uh, team, and, uh, housing element is part of a general update process?
Yes, good evening. Um, first, I do want to clarify my role. Uh, we are not the same consultant that worked on the housing element. We're engaged with the city now on the, the other elements of the general plan. Um, we are a little bit in the same boat, where we're just trying to take an adopted document and help city staff figure out how you can implement it. So what would you like me to clarify? Holly?
Do you just want me to tackle all of the questions? Uh, you may, you may tackle them as in any order that you wish.
Okay. So first, I, uh, heard Sherman talk about the potential for amending the identified sites. That is absolutely a possibility. What that would involve is making amendment to your housing element. That would open a process up again with HCD. Uh, and the 90-day referral is, um, HCD's allowance for how long they have to do an initial review of any amendments. So outside of that 90 days, there would still be some time dedicated to identifying the new sites that would be proposed, um, pulling whatever documentation together and making amendments to the adopted housing element document itself. That would get submitted to HCD staff, and then they have 90 days in order to provide comments back, assuming that they agree with the sites, and all of those sites do comply with the, the various requirements um, to meet your portion of the RENA that the original four sites were intended to satisfy, then they would provide a, a conditional compliance letter, essentially acknowledging that your new sites meet the intention that the four sites in your current adopted housing element are providing the opportunity for lower income units, I'm assuming, Holly. Um, and then once you have that conditional compliance letter, then you would need to re-adopt the housing element. So it would come back before this body for a recommendation, and then it would have to go back to city council. That entire process is probably going to take, I would say, six months in reality. Um, once you integrate all of the different steps that are required, it's certainly a possibility. Um, one of the challenges is you do have a deadline right now of December 31st, um, which is why this is before you this evening. If you do not meet the deadline to make all of the amendments to the zoning code in accordance with that deadline, then there is a possibility that the HCD will say, hey, you guys didn't do what you committed to doing in your adopted housing element, we're going to pull back your compliance. And that's where, uh, issues come up with, um, grant funding availability uh, and potentially some other enforcement actions, but we don't really know what those are because we have not had to go through those yet. Um, so that is an option in front of you. Um, I do want to also clarify, if you adopt the 20 dwelling unit acre minimum tonight for these sites, you generally cannot downzone property. So if you say you can do 20 dwelling units to the acre on this site, there is a, a provision called no net loss. So if you want to downzone, so, you know, say 10 dwelling units to the acre, you just need to identify sites where you can make up the units that would presumably be lost through that downzone. So it is possible to essentially downzone property, you just have to make it up in other sites. So there is a, a provision allowed for that. What other questions came up?
Um, I believe we would have to, um, there's a question of capacity to do this, um, and if this is...
I would have to defer back to the city, uh, because the previous consultant who prepared your housing element, that contract is complete. Um, so you do not have a consultant under contract to work specifically on the housing element. Um, and in order to engage a consultant, that would be additional funding, but that is a city consideration that we're not involved in.
This could, this would also have to dovetail with the, with the general plan update process, which Sarah and her team are involved with, and, um, it, it also, it has a, a timeframe, uh, for implementation and for certain steps. And the, the housing element really is, is, you know, a dovetail that fits into that, but if it sort of jumps out of place, then, uh, we really have to look at, uh, where, where our resources are going at this point uh, to get some of these primary planning documents in place.
So it sounds like the issue here tonight is sites. So educate me a little bit. Where, are we supposed to come up with, um, a minimum num- a minimum amount of square footage of sites? Is there a minimum requirement for acreage for the sites? What is that requirement? Can we add sites to what we have now? We have four sites. Can we just add sites and move it along that way?
Yeah, so the overview of that process is the RENA that Holly referen- uh, referenced, the regional housing needs allocation gives you a total number of units. What was yours, 880, I think? So, yeah, so City of Kingsburg has been told, over the next eight years, you need to plan on accommodating 883 units. That number gets broken down into different income, income categories. You have very low, low, moderate, and then above moderate. I don't, I'm not familiar with the numbers. But in order to be able to show that you have enough sites in your city to accommodate units within each of those income categories, HCD wants the city to identify sites within your city limits. Generally, the rule of thumb is the higher density that is allowed for any site, then the lower income category, you can check that requirement off the list, which is, I think, why we are seeing, these four sites in particular are intended to satisfy your lower income RENA requirement. So, um, if you want to add sites, then if you're taking away sites that accommodate lower income RENA, you need to add sites that would also accommodate a lower income RENA requirement. You can't just go out and, you know, find some sites that you could zone R1 or single-family, it's because it's not an even swap. I'm not familiar with the site selection process that City of Kingsburg went through, because I wasn't, again, involved, but that's generally how that site selection process plays out.
Yeah, I know I'm not familiar with what they did looking at sites either, but I'm anticipating the city didn't just look at these four sites, I'm anticipating there was other sites that came up as possible options, and people here tonight are concerned about these four sites. We could mitigate some of that concern by expanding the number of sites. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe there is only four, those four sites in Kingsburg. But we'd have to explore that to mitigate some of the concerns here tonight. Sherman says there's other sites. I'll kick it back to you, Holly, is there, did they, did they come up with other sites that could be added, uh?
Uh, that was not, um, part of the, the consideration when we were given, um, the path forward to getting the, um, this housing element certified. I think, uh, there was, there was, there were a number of sites that were considered. I think they wanted to look at multifamily sites in particular, because they're already zoned for, for a higher density... zoned for, for a higher density. So to increase the density, you know, from 14 units to 20 units, well, perhaps was more, you know, more accepting in a, in a larger sense than maybe an R1.7 to, you know, read, to rezone it to, to a multifamily. So that's, I believe, how that may have gone. There were vacant sites too. They were not, they were not developed with any structures that I know of anyway. So that was the other consideration.
How difficult would it be to add more sites?
Well, go ahead, Mike.
I just want to clarify the, the position of the planning commission tonight. Your decisions tonight, your decision tonight is either to recommend to the city council the adoption of the zoning, of the amendments to title, to Title 17 and the secret determination with regards to that, or your alternative, your alternative is to, is to not recommend approval to the city council. So we're not in a situation tonight where we can, you can, I mean, if you want to talk about alternatives, you can, but that's not part of your decision-making process tonight. If you, if the, if the majority of the commission is concerned about sites, you could not recommend and, and recommend to the council that they look at other sites. But the selection of sites and the, any alterations to the provisions of the, of Title 17 and the amendments to Title 17 that are before you are not subject to, they're not subject to your change. You can advise the city council if you think there should be change, but you either have to recommend approval or recommend that it not be approved. And then that, that's forwarded to the city council. And then the city council can make determinations as to how or whether or not there should be changes to the amendments to the, to Title 17.
Okay. Discussion from the planning commission? What kind of a deadline are we on, on this process?
You're on a December 31, 2020. The city is on a December 31, 2024 deadline. If the, if the suggestions made by Sherman would be adopted by the city council and based upon what the consultant statement is, which I think is based upon what has happened in the past, you're not looking at 90 days. Because one of the things that, as she mentioned, we'd have to go back and hire another consultant. So that's going to take a minimum of 60 days. And then they have to do the reevaluation of the sites, which will take another 90 days. And then they have to resubmit to the, to HCD. So as Holly pointed out, this, the Title 17, the municipal code is a living document. You've been involved in amendments to the municipal code previously. So it's not as though at this point in time that what we're, what we're adopting is not something that, based upon development in the city, could result in some changes to the modifications that are before you tonight. But not be, not getting to the December, not getting everything done before the December 31, 2024 deadline is, would be significant to the city from the standpoint, not only of the adoption of the housing element, which we're required to do, but as Holly pointed out, dovetailing with the approval of the new general plan that's coming, that will be coming before you next year, correct? Next year?
Yes.
So, and then you'll be looking at the zoning ordinance again because with the new general plan, the zoning ordinance must always be consistent with the general plan. So based upon what the new amendments to the general, to the new general plan is, there may be other amendments to the zoning ordinance that will come back to you after that point in time also. But it's very important and, and that this matter get resolved and the approval be done before December 31 of 2024.
Mike, why are we doing this in November? Why weren't we doing this in April?
We didn't actually get the letter of certification until late September. So, you know, we didn't, we didn't have the time to, to do an in-depth analysis for alternatives. I understand the, I hear what you're saying about the, the limitations of this, but I will emphasize what, what Mr. Nolan has said about the zoning ordinance being a, a living document and that we are also, you know, in many ways, opening up the zoning ordinance for other changes as we go forward, especially with the general plan update. So that's, that's an opportunity if, if needed and if directed to, to look at, you know, potential other sites. But again, we are, we're, we're constrained by time at this point. And it's not just us, it's other cities received their letters quite late also from HCD, even those who were, who are well ahead of, of the, the timeframe that was given to us, so.
When were these parcels identified?
I believe they were identified in September.
If I understand correctly, we are looking at four parcels at this point in time. However, we could change that in the future and change the parcels that would be acceptable to meet the numbers if we had another project come in like Marion Villas. Is that correct?
Sarah, would you like to come up and recommend what might be the case? Hypothetically, we're all, we're, we're being, we're dealing in hypotheticals tonight.
If, if, if you moved forward with the, the rezones this evening, you're saying at a future point, you could come back and switch out those sites if you got another Marion Village to develop? Is that the, the question?
That's, that's my question. If we had someone like a county housing authority were to go ahead and acquire some property and they went ahead and put a development in like Marion Villas, we could substitute that property for one of these parcels, correct? Because we're looking at total numbers. We don't care where exactly. So we could say, these four parcels may not be subject to that. This other parcel will go ahead and take some of those total number of houses and spread them over there.
In, in theory, yes. A couple of things would need to happen. You would have to, we would need to assume that the site that the new Marion is getting developed on is actually being upzoned. Because part of the point of finding other sites is you want to be able to return the four properties to the zone district that they currently are, right? So you would still be completing a downzone, so you need to upzone something else. If the new Marion came in and just developed a site that was already zoned for higher density, then, then that wouldn't work because you wouldn't be able to show that no net loss. So there would be a, a caveat to where that new property or the new development could actually develop. That, in my understanding, is that would still also require an amendment to the housing element. So that's just a process that you would have to go through.
So if we went to a piece of property that is currently designated medium density residential and then it became a higher residential, a high-density residential, we could shift those numbers over to that higher-density residential, correct?
In theory, yes.
Could we eliminate something off this map if we found another area that we could shift it over and free up this?
I think that is the whole idea behind that question, yeah, is to be able to remove the, the 20 dwelling unit per acre minimum from the four sites tonight. If you were able to find another property or other multiple properties that you could then upzone or create a higher district on.
I'm just kind of curious. I'm a little uncomfortable with just taking someone's property and rezoning it. Did anybody talk to the property owners or what was? I know if I purchased property and it just gets rezoned, I don't know if I'd be happy about that. So how did, are the property owners aware that there's being, there's changes being made to their?
I would have to defer to Holly on that.
That was, there was, there were notices that were sent out to the property owners and then also to the, the 300 feet radius around those properties too. So they were noticed.
Sherman has a question?
I know that scenario. Wouldn't you need a property owner, whoever got rezoned under this? You couldn't just downzone their property without?
That's all, yeah. I mean, it's all noticing. They would be noticed and they would have the opportunity to come to the public hearing and protest, yeah. Just like with an upzone, yeah, any rezone action.
Do we have any of the property owners of these parcels here today?
It looks like not.
So we're rezoning their property and they didn't even come in for the planning commission meeting on?
Yeah, I don't, Holly, did you?
No, they were, everybody, and everyone was noticed. Carol, Carol does that very effectively. That's part of our, our software and they were noticed.
Are they notified by phone or by letter?
They're, they're notified by letter.
Oh, was, is this the one by, over off of Academy?
Mr. Nolan, am I correct in assuming that the city has until December 30th to approve this item number three on this agenda?
The city council?
The city council.
The city council does, yes.
Till December 30th? So at, at, at the worst-case scenario?
They will not be in session on December 30th, is my guess.
Now, I'm talking theoretical now.
Right.
December 30th is, is the last day they can approve this and comply with the state's requirements, is that correct? Okay. So this doesn't have to be done tonight. There's some concerns from the city. Mr. Nolan?
You have to make a recommendation tonight. You have to take some action tonight and either recommend approval or, or not recommend approval and send it to the city council for their first meeting in December.
Okay.
And they can approve it over our disapproval, correct?
Yes. Or you're doing, your, your responsibility tonight as the planning agency for the city is to make recommendations to the city council. The final decision with regards to the amendments to Title 17 is with the city council.
Okay. Well, there's some, I think there's some valid concerns raised tonight about these four parcels and possibly other, yeah, and possibly other, other parcels that could be added. So anybody else want to speak? Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good eve, excuse me, good evening. My name is Judy Pagel. I am the past president of HOA of Park Place, which is a HOA complex next to one of the parcels that you're looking at, the 2.72 acre parcel. And I'm speaking on behalf of most of the owners there. And I have an owner with me here also. Our concern is, and this is a simple question, and I apologize if it's too simple.
Judy Pagel?
Yes.
Right here.
Okay.
Yep.
If you guys get a project for the 2.72 acre parcel that is behind Tri-County, do we, as owners within 300 feet radius, have the opportunity to come back and say, please reconsider if it's two or three stories? We went through this 20 years ago when Erickson developed that property, or had ownership of that property and brought a apartment complex forward and it was rejected due to the owners next door. Really, and I am a licensed real estate broker, and it also diminishes our property values. So it's a big consideration for the owners there that live there now and for the future owners. In fact, I have somebody making an offer tomorrow on one of the units that is on the perimeter that would be affected by that. And I have to disclose to them by law, by code, by ethics code, that there is a possibility of having this higher-density complex built next door. So again, do we have the ability to come back? Or is it, if you guys agreed in this, then it's a blanket, okay, and you can do anything you want? Or do we get notified again?
So just clarify for me. You're here speaking, representing a buyer?
No.
No, I'm representing myself. I am an owner and I live in the complex.
Oh, you live in the complex?
And I'm the past president, yes, sir.
Adjacent to one of these properties on the map?
Yes, contiguous to the 2.72 acre parcel behind Tri-County.
That was, that was the parcel that Erickson came in with a subdivision, with a proposal that was three stories at one point in time?
Yes, it was three stories.
And, and then after discussion with site plan review and discussion with planning commission, he withdrew the project because it wouldn't pencil, if I remember correctly?
I can't remember the exact reason, Bruce, but I remember that we had a great deal of discomfort with it. I wasn't the owner then. I was simply the real estate agent representing buying and selling there.
Okay, so you have a concern of that this adjacent parcel that's going to be designated could adversely affect?
Correct, sir.
What you have?
Yes, sir. Adversely, perfect word, yes. So I just want to make sure that we have the ability later on to come back and voice our concerns.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate your, your comment. I just wanted to, to address some of that. The, there will be some objective standards that will be reviewed by this body and by, also by city council and adopted and part of, I'm under the impression that these objective standards would also address height limits and in terms of how it, how they affect adjacent properties. Of course, within, it, it all has to pencil out anyway with, with the investment community. But it would, it would certainly consider as the effects on surrounding properties in terms of height limitation. So ideally, it would be lower, you know, adjacent to property lines and then, you know, the, the density would, would be obtained farther into the project. This is my understanding. I have not seen the objective standards drafted yet, but there is, they're, they're being worked on now.
But if you have to meet a minimum between 20 and 30 units on a 2.72 acre parcel, it doesn't pencil out. I mean, a single story would be great, but you're not going to get enough to pencil out on a, on a single story. I, I don't, I don't think. But anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another speaker wants to come forward. Please give us your name.
My name is Laura Guy.
All right, thank you.
And I am a homeowner immediately south of that same parcel.
Okay.
So obviously I have some serious concerns. I understand the city's hands are tied in certain things in funding, so I understand that side of it. How likely is it to actually come to fruition? What is the likelihood that somebody would come and say, I want to build? And it will happen?
Well, is that a question?
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you my two cents. Once this is opened up, it's possible for somebody to say, that's a great idea. That's exactly what I want to do. I want to put up some apartments and then you'd have to deal with it. It could happen immediately or it could never happen. So there is no guarantee from us or anyone that it won't happen or that it, it won't happen for a long time. No guarantees.
Also realize, as Holly has said, there are certain standards that have to be met. For instance, there was a subdivision that was proposed over, that is proposed over on Academy that was adjoining a single-family subdivision.
that was adjoining a single family subdivision. And we went ahead and as planning commission restricted the heights, the view lines, the setbacks and the amenities that were allowed to be done on that particular apartment complex project. That does, what I'm saying is that just because they want, they're supposed to build a minimum of twenty units per acre does not mean that they can go ahead and put up a Park Kingsburg right next to your property line. So there are certain standards that they'll have to meet in the way of setbacks, heights, all that kind of stuff. But I understand when you buy a house.
And you have a young family. I don't want low income coming.
And, and that property is already zoned, three point five, which is, I won't say it's medium density, but it's at least that dense. So when you bought that property, it's kind of like, I hate to say this, but when the fire station out on Caneo or Sierra was noticed and that subdivision was built, after the subdivision was built, a lot of people said, I didn't know or I didn't realize that you're going to have a fire station there. It was zoned for a fire station. In part of the contract documents that people signed, they had to acknowledge the fact that they knew that that was eventually going to be a fire station. I hope you were made aware of the property that was, how it was zoned next to your house when you bought your house.
I don't recall that specifically.
Yeah, I just, Judy's a good real estate agent. Good real estate agents go ahead and have a code of ethics. They go ahead and disclose all that information to their buyers.
Right.
So.
So my other question is, if someone else comes to purchase this property and says, I want to put something else there, because it is zoned for these units, is that the only use that that land can have?
I'll let Holly answer that question.
Well, yeah, I mean, if it is zoned residential and somebody wants to build a commercial, you know, use it for commercial purposes, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be allowed. You know, and there are certain, there are certain areas of the city where we have some mixed use, where we have commercial and residential. There's an example of that right down the street, for instance. But that's, that's a particular overlay. So, so yeah, that if it's, if it's zoned for, for residential, it, it remains residential traditionally.
And only at that number of dwelling units?
That, that's usually the case. There is an underlying, you know, zone. And that can change over time depending on lots of things, actions. And, you know, how, how people feel about density or how people feel about, you know, big lots, large lot sizes, that kind of thing. So that's, that's all, that's all city determination with input from the public.
So if somebody comes to buy that land and wants to put apartments there, will we be notified and can we decline that later?
They would be, if I remember correctly, they would be notified that a project is in process and anybody within three hundred feet would be notified. And then you could come to planning commission hearing and ask, how tall are these things going to be? What's the setbacks? All that kind of stuff. Yeah, you would, you would receive notice on that.
Yeah, I just, it depends on, it, it, yes, that, yes, and that could be the case, but it really, it depends on whether it's, it's a by right use or whether it's a, a conditional use, if it needs entitlements, if it needs a, a planned unit development. So a lot of those would, you know, that, that would all depend.
I understand. Obviously, our say is not necessarily directly affecting a decision. So it's just our thoughts, correct? Is that correct?
Thank you. Oh, no.
Is that correct?
We take everything into account before we, before we make a final decision. So yeah, your input is important. Holly, quick question. If I remember correctly, aren't most, is, um, do we require that multifamily units, projects of more than five units have to come in as PUDs?
Uh, yes, most, most units, it really, it just depends on the zone. I mean, most units need a PUD or if they're multifamily. There are certain, certain zones where that is by right and, and the housing element identifies those zones where, where multifamily is, is allowed as, as a by right use. So what we do have is, again, the, the objective standards that we can apply to projects. And that would be anything from, you know, design to setbacks to, you know, any, any one of a number of, of elements. That is a discussion that I will, I'm going to welcome planning commission's input on when we get to consider those too. So even the, the by right, you know, projects would have objective standards, so they apply.
And I'm sorry, I, I used the term PUD and I should have explained it means planned unit development. So.
Bruce, if, on the, on the page that we provided to the planning commission, number, condition number three is the development of any site within the HEI overlay district should comply with all applicable objective development standards. Objective, you know, number three, which is going to be, which, that, that on the page that you provided. So those, those, as Holly pointed out, those objective development standards, I think will address some of the issues that were raised, are being raised tonight with regards to the, how the develop, how the project is developed.
I will say too, just as, as, as an additional note, we did have an action for allocations earlier this evening and that all, all multifamily housing projects would need allocations as part of our growth management ordinance.
Mr. Nolan, I have a question. So if we decide to recommend to the city council zoning text amendments and housing element input implementation not be approved, can we add other recommendations to that recommendation such as the city council immediately institute action to see if there's other applicable sites available? Something like that?
I think it would be appropriate for you to, if, if it's, if the majority of the commission elects not to make the recommendation, to identify the reasons behind your decision not to make the recommendation.
Okay.
Just so the city council will be aware of, of the concerns by, of the, of the majority of this, of the planning commission.
Okay, good advice. Next quick question. Any project that comes in has to request housing allocations. How, and in a multi, if I remember correctly, the limitation on housing allocations for multifamily use is, is it thirty-five? Thirty-five units per allocation. So if somebody wanted to come in and build on two acres at twenty units per the acre, they could not receive the full forty allo, full forty unit allocation. They would have to do it over a period of multiple years. Is that correct?
Well, there are, I don't know how many there are now, but you know, because of lack of development over the years, I think there are some additional allocations that have been, the council has the ability to roll over allocations over a period, but they're limited to how long that can happen. But they have an opportunity to roll over allocations. For instance, if, if in 2025, we only have these forty-four units and we don't have any more allocations in 2025, the remaining allocations that would be available in 2025 at the council's discretion could be rolled over into 2026. So there's a potential, to be transparent, there's the potential that if there are unused allocations that the council has elected to roll over to, to another year, there potentially could be available forty unit, forty allocations for a project of that character.
I thought, I thought we'd gotten rid of that. Didn't, didn't know we'd gotten rid of the rollovers. We never did.
There's been discussion of that, but no, I don't, there's no action that's been taken that would, at this point in time.
It is at council discretion.
At council discretion whether or not they roll over. And so each time that there's a, that that comes up, the council can decide whether or not to roll over.
How many, how many acres is in parcel three nine six dash zero two zero dash one nine, the one south of Sierra?
It's about two point eight two acres.
Two point eight two acres? So they could put, it'd take them at least three years' worth of allocations to go ahead and develop that site?
Potentially.
So that would make it, if I were a developer and knowing that I'd have to go ahead and get, do this over a three-year allocation period, that would probably make it fairly unattractive. Is that, would that be an assumption? Okay. Anybody else in the public want to speak?
I want to clarify a few things. Number four of the, on the update you got, that says no PUDs. That's what I asked for clarification before, so it's not going to go through the PUD process. It's meant to be by right so that they have the by right to do the number of units. And also by right is, you know, when he gets his lots developed, he's not going to come through planning commission with every house to ask for, you know, approval or people's considerations. It'll be, you know, the development standards that are normal with certain heights, setbacks, you know, basic, basic things. So not the input, I think, that most people are used to on projects like, like this when they're asking for an entitlement. So. I also, what, have we ever been out of compliance with the housing element? And what were the ramifications of that?
Well, we, I, I believe there were years where we didn't even do a housing element, to be honest with you. So now we're, we're getting into, we're, 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 we've been in compliance as of last housing element and we're in compliance now. And we've, there have been many years where we did not do annual reports and we're doing them now. That's, that's part of the new normal for many of us.
Somewhat undefined what the ramifications would be. And if we're, I would imagine if we're making a good faith effort to try to meet those numbers in an alternative way, the heavy hand is unlikely. But that's my opinion. Yeah, I just, I think we need to make sure we're clear on what we're saying about this zoning ordinance. You know, you're asking, can I, you know, you're making a good point about a PUD process, but that's not, I mean, is that, am I wrong or is that?
I don't think we ever said that there was a PUD process. We've said that it was a.
If you look at that code, because, you know, we put the code on there, well, who knows what that number means. Well, you got to look it up. It says no PUD, no conditional use permit to prevent. You know, the state wants to streamline this stuff. They want to take away your control and that's the purpose of all of this. And so when you, you know, when we do this, this amendment, we're, we're, we're stuck there. And the other thing was on the whole about trading off, right? That's true, but you think a property owner that has a higher density is not going to maybe take notice when somebody tries to downzone them and take away the number of units? I mean, I'm sure you're going to, probably most investment property owners aren't real concerned about you giving them more density. But I'm sure they'll be concerned about you giving them less density or less rights on that property. So.
Anybody else want to come forward? We're breaking the rules here by allowing everybody to come up multiple times, but that's okay. This is Kingsburg.
This is my first time, maybe last time. My name's Nico Myers. What's that? I'm sorry.
Give us your name.
Nico Myers, yeah. Appreciate hearing me out and just want to say I appreciate development and growth and these are all good things. What he was talking about sounds wonderful, you know. I'm in, within the three hundred feet of the parcel south of Sierra at Twenty-Fourth. I just, I know there's already a lot of traffic. I'm thinking forty, forty more residences and however many more cars and just the log jam that that would come up with. I know planning commission is always looking out for our best interest and doing their best with the information. I'll tug in from the same end of the rope and that's appreciated, but I just like to voice my concerns with this particular parcel, especially if, and I'm, I'm confused on the timeframe too, because we had, I received this notice on October thirtieth. Obviously, there was some, some stuff in the works and to piggyback off CJ, how, how is it that we had such a short timeframe on all of this? That's, is it, did someone drop the ball on that or is it?
No, it's a, I mean, there, there is, there's a requirement for public hearing notice to be mailed within ten, ten days and that was done at, at, from this office. So when you received that, that was within that, within the ten day notice. We also did a, a public hearing notice in the newspaper that indicated what was.
Yeah, and I'm, but did they really give us ninety days to make these decisions and take it through public hearings and all that or was this something?
The ninety days that, that has been referred to is the, is the requirement that housing and community development has to act on a submittal. And correct me if I'm wrong about that, but that is, that's, that's the ninety day period that we're talking about. So when we submitted our, our housing element for review, they responded on day eighty-nine and a half and got back to us with their comments.
Can't believe it.
And that was, well, and part, part that was, you know, they were following their, their rule, but they were stretching it to the very, the very end. So.
Right, yeah, it all, I mean, I, the logic makes sense in choosing parcels that are already high density or medium density, bump them up to high. If there was more time, I would hope it would definitely be reconsidered. It seems, yeah, you know, a member of the commission was wondering why we're just getting this before us. I, like, I, I tend to agree with that. Like, that's, if there's, if there's more options, I'd like to exercise them. If it's something the state gave us late notice on, you know, and they're putting us on reasonable timelines, you know, I think it's within our, our best interest to push back on that if we have that ability and, you know, make a, make an informed choice, consider all the options instead of the fast choice, which is how this is coming off to me, which I could be completely wrong in that, but.
No, I appreciate your comments and, and I would encourage you to, to keep, you know, keep abreast of, of some of these important conversations. And we, we are often with staff between a rock and a hard place, to be, to be perfectly frank with you. You know, with, this has been a very long process and we have, you know, certainly been thrown a few curveballs by, by the state. And, you know, we've done our best to, to push back where we thought would, would be effective, but then to move forward where we can and with the, with, with the flexibility that we, any flexibility we can identify in the future, you know, we will certainly exercise.
That's all I got. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Chris Peterson. I don't own property near, near this parcel that is being discussed, but I do tend to follow the online stuff from the city on the city website, and I could be wrong, but I don't remember any public hearing about this, but I could be wrong. But my question is really more to Holly, what newspaper do you put the public notice in? And I know it has to be an adjudicated newspaper, so I understand that.
Well, it, it depends. When we, when we do it in a timely and economical fashion, it is currently the Business Journal. It has, it has bounced from one paper to another depending on circulation. I mean, we've had papers fold over the years, and then we've had new ones spring up, and so that's our current practice, is, is the Business Journal. And I think that that's followed by a fair number of cities, too. Some of that is, is cost, and some of that is the number of times they publish per week, which, which fits our requirements in, in a better way.
Have you checked into the circulation of that publication for the 93631 zip code?
That, that is not, you know, that's, I know that it's a paper that's, you know, of, of record, a newspaper of record, and that is, and that is a city clerk determination, not, not a determination that Holly Owen makes.
Okay, well, okay, because, I mean, Abigail and I have had a bit of a discussion about this, and I honestly, I don't know the circulation of Business Journal, but I do know what you said, that, you know, it is, and they have an online edition, but I just don't know how many Kingsburg people read it besides me, because I haven't looked into it. And so that is just one of my concerns, is that, that maybe people weren't aware of it. And I know it's difficult with newspapers because they're unfortunately a dying breed, and I don't know what the law is, but maybe something like on this in the future, excuse me, the city maybe needs to do something with, put it in Kingsburg Carrier, and I, that probably doesn't meet the legal requirement because, but it would be an extra avenue of notification to get people aware of, from the Kingsburg Carrier or even in some of the, the social media blasts that the city does. That's just an idea.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. City staff will take care, take that under consideration.
John Johnston, thank you for letting me speak again. So real quick, you keep hearing this December 31st. I work for a public agency. Something happened. So let me just let the cat out of the bag. Something happened, something didn't get done right. We didn't meet a deadline as a city, whatever, we're past that. But what happens in public agencies when you rush to make a decision like this, it usually doesn't go well, okay? So I'm gonna keep it short. You're saying pencil out and ifs, ands, and theories, and we can throw all of that out, but the problem is, is the way that this is zoned now, the piece of property that I've been talking about, everybody's been talking about, probably doesn't pencil out to develop. That's why it's been faken for all these years. You do something like this, that piece of property becomes very attractive, and you can talk heights and setbacks and all of that, whatever. When, if city council can, can vote this in without your vote and pass it, then let them. But I would beg you to stand united on the development side of Kingsburg and say no. That would, that would be my ask of you, because the fact of the matter is, once this gets passed, I couldn't even wrap my brain around 20 per acre until Sherman says, "A max?" I didn't even go to a max. I'm thinking 30 per acre? Dude, this is crazy. That is a lot of low-income apartments in one already congested area. I'll be honest with you. This passes, I, I would put my house up for sale before it started, because I'm not going to be able to sell it once it starts.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I just want to let you people know, this might come up at the city council meeting, the next city council meeting. Find out when that is, and you will have five minutes each during the, what do they call it, the public comment, to come forward and talk to the city council about your concerns. The city council might be making the final decision on this, so.
They will be making this.
They will be making it. So keep in touch with the staff, find out when the next city council meeting is, and if you, if you, if you continue to have real concerns about this, they need to hear about it, okay? City council needs to hear about it. All right, so everybody has pretty much had an opportunity to speak. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for one clarification with regards to what Sherman said in relationship to section 65, 583.2, is that what, that it does provide that it, it does not require a conditional use permit or planned unit development permit, but it does provide that any subdivision of the site shall be subject to all laws, including but not limited to local government ordinances implementing the subdivision map act. A local ordinance may provide that a right of use does not, a local ordinance that, that may provide that right of, use of right does not exempt the use from design review.
Okay. All right. All right, back to the planning commission to make a decision. Any discussion amongst the planning commission members about item number three? Which is the consideration of zoning text amendments and housing element implication, which we've been discussing for the past hour.
And it's an up or down, right?
No, as Mr. Nolan has said, we either recommend that the city council approve the zoning text amendment and housing element implementation, or we recommend that it not be approved, and then we can also provide reasons why we don't think it should be approved, and give some direction to city council. I make a motion that we recommend approval of the SEQA determination, which is the first-
Did we already do that?
Yep. No, not on this one.
Not on, not on this one.
Oh, okay. Pardon me.
You have, you have resolution 2024-05. That, that, that resolution combines the SEQA approval with, so, with the zone, with the zoning approval. So what you could do is say that, that if you're doing just the SEQA, that you are approving the SEQA provisions of resolution 2024-05.
Okay. That's, that's what I want to identify, is only SEQA on this motion. Okay, go ahead. I recommend approval of the SEQA determination. Make a motion? Are you making a motion? Yes. Making a motion that we approve, just to identify, we approve the, the- SEQA determination for amendment 2017 to the municipal code. So you are making a motion that we recommend to the city council. SEQA only.
The SEQA, the SEQA determination is set forth in resolution 2024-05.
Okay, so you're making a motion, we recommend that the city council approve the environmental determination. Is, is not a project under SEQA for resolution.
No. The SEQA determination, the SEQA determination is that, is that an addendum to the general plan EIR is sufficient for purposes of approving the, the amendments and the, the proposed amendments to title 17 and the application of the housing element overlay for, for the district parcels.
Okay, so that's a motion.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying my motion.
You're welcome.
Second? We have, we have a second, motion and a second. Any amendments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All full say no. Motion carries for the SEQA portion of item number three. Now we have to address consideration of zoning text amendments and housing element implementation overlay. Are we going to recommend to the city council approval of those items, or are we going to recommend the city council that they not be approved?
You know, living in Kingsburg all my life, you know, the quality of Kingsburg and being here, and, you know, people have moved here and bought houses here and so forth, and, you know, we've developed a community, and, you know, we're up here to basically, you know, guide the development and so forth to a certain extent, but if we didn't have any alternatives, and we were stuck, and the state was force-feeding this, 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 you know- Mandated. Mandated, yeah, mandated, and we had nothing to turn to, I would say, you know, we're, we're stuck. You know, by law, we have to do something, and, and, yeah, chances are, they won't develop with that property, but what if they do? You know, the person living across the street, you know, it impacts them. So my personal belief, my feeling is that if there's alternatives, I would say we could recommend the city council look at these other sites as alternatives, and let them decide which way to go with this.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. No, that's not a motion. Okay. In light of the fact that council needs to take action on this, to stay within compliance, even though in the past we have skirted under the radar, the state is much more proactive at this point in time in not letting things go under the radar like they used to. And quite frankly, that's because of what we have in Sacramento. I recommend to the city council, my, my motion would be to recommend to the city council to go along with the proposed amendments to title 17, and with the caveat that we continue to encourage council to look at alternatives so that we can amend this document as soon as possible. Okay, I want to bring you back to item number three on the agenda. It says we are considering zoning text amendments and housing element implementation overlay. Title 17 is part of that, so we have to actually address those two specific items as part of a motion, I believe. What is, okay. Then I recommend that we pass resolution 2024-05 to council with the caveat, additional information urging them to take all necessary steps to amend the specific locales as soon as practical. So just to clarify, so you're making a motion recommending to the city council that they approve and adopt zoning text amendments and the housing element implementation overlay that we've discussed tonight? That's correct, with the caveat, with the additional urging of them to seek alternatives so that we can remain in compliance with the state deadlines, but work around them as necessary. And we're not working around them, we're, we're complying with them as necessary. Okay, so just let the folks out there know, if this passes, if his motion passes, then that means that the thing that we've been discussing here tonight will be implemented, but that doesn't stop you from going to the next city council meeting and complaining about it. Doesn't stop you at all. We, we are recommending to council, and council has to make decisions. Yeah. So if this passes, his motion passes, then, then that means we're recommending to council that they go ahead and accept it the way it is. As opposed to recommending that it not be approved. But in either case, the final decision is the council's, and I, I would encourage you to go to the next council meeting and make your voices heard, because that body has more authority than us. Do we know the next city council meeting?
The, the next council meeting is the 4th of December.
We have a council member sitting right here, yes.
Oh, sorry, yes.
I'm sorry, man.
Uh, Vince Palomar, city council, we, we have a meeting actually December 20th, but not, this will not be on the agenda until December the 4th. Excuse me, this, this, that's in December? Okay, I meant, no, thank you. November 20th, this month, November, December 4th. When, when this will be on the, our agenda, on the December 4th. Sorry, I had December on the brain, sorry about that, yeah.
So the next council meeting is-
We have one next week, the 20th. We have a meeting next Wednesday night.
They can go to that meeting.
They can come, you guys can come to the meeting and-
But they have public comments, actually.
Public comment, but the, when it really gonna, when it's really gonna count, you can state your, you can make your statement on the 20th, but when it's really gonna count, it's gonna be on the 4th, when it's on the agenda.
Mr. Palomar's correct. I believe that if you go to that meeting next week, that you get this, and you speak at the public comments section, which you're allowed to do, and you get this information in their heads, so that when December 4th comes up, there'll be a head start on this. You'll have a head start on this, if you make, if you make your views known next week. If you wait until December 4th, then they may not be prepared to make a decision at that time if, if you spring it on them December 4th. Go to the meeting next week, I would recommend, make your views, make your, your views known during the public comments section. And then for sure on December 4th, because that's when they make, that's when this comes on their agenda, and they have to make a decision. Does that help? All right.
You have a question?
No, I've got a motion that's pending. It needs a second. He has a motion we need to discuss, and his motion is to recommend to the city council approval of- Approval of resolution 2024-05. Yeah, with, with the addition of conditions three and four of section 1748.050. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? No second. Motion fails for lack of a second. Then I, then I will go ahead and make a motion that we do not recommend to council resolution 2024-25 with the addition of items three and four of the section that was just added. So, all for the motion is, the-
Well, it's either one way or the other, and if the first motion failed, you go to the second motion.
So the second motion is, we recommend to the city council, they do not approve zoning text amendments and housing element implementation overlays, that is in our package tonight. They, they do not approve it with the additional recommendations that-
They, they do not approve it, with the additional recommendations that, I'll add a couple myself. With additional recommendations-
I'm the one who makes the motion. You can't add my motion.
Okay, I'll amend it then.
You can amend my motion.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, that's, that's-
That's a motion?
The motion is to recommend to council that they do not approve Resolution 2024-05.
Okay, and the reason is, we have to give them some reason.
The reason is, we feel that the four parcels that have been identified are not adequate to go ahead and meet the opportunities for alternative sites.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. All right. We have a second?
Yeah.
A motion and a second. I would like to make, make an amendment to that motion, that we are recommending non-approval because of the possibility that there are currently other sites that could be added to that overlay, which would increase the city's options for providing that housing on a, on a bigger scale.
He needs a second to that amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second to the amendment. Amendment, second amendment.
So you need to vote on the amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment? No discussion on the amendment. So all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, say no. All right. The motion as it stands is we recommend to the city council, they do not approve zoning text amendments and housing element implementation overlay presented tonight with the, with the additions, with, with the amendments, or with the additions recommended by Mr. Blaney, and the, at the amendment, and the amendment that was offered and voted on.
I'm sure glad I'm not taking the minutes.
Or something like that. All right? That's the motion, second on that motion with the amendment.
No, we've already seconded all the motions.
The amendment's been seconded and approved. Now you've got to go ahead and, on the primary motion.
Okay, did we get a second on the primary motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. That motion carries. Thank you very much for coming out. That was an interesting discussion. Your input is important. Make sure you go to the city council meeting. They're the 800-pound gorilla on this issue. Okay, what's else on our agenda? Next was future agenda items. Oh, I don't know if Holly wants to-